Call the city council meeting to order for April 10th, 2018. I know we are waiting on the city manager, he went and got some paperwork, but go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask if everybody would take a moment of silence. Stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing, I'd like to, it looks like some new folks here tonight, so there's a sign up sheet if you haven't signed up, if you want to speak as far as public comment, am I on now? Sign up sheet, public comment, make sure you're on the list, right now it's empty, so that would tell me nobody wants to speak at public comment for any agenda item or non-agenda item, so if that's the case, kind of letting everybody know now, if not, it looks like somebody's walking back there to sign up, so.
Move that sheet up here, Michael.
Right here, Mike.
So if you want to come up here and sign, you've got to come up here. It's not that far, Michael.
I knew that would be a first if we went through a council meeting.
She's not here. We've never heard from our potential council candidate, he's never spoke at all on a forum here, I don't think, except the transportation board when he was here and we talked to him. So you've never told us anything about your positions on any issue or had any comments? Is that fair, Mr. Osborne?
Well, the point on this one is to learn.
Listening and learning, okay, that's what we need.
All right, so with that said, we'll, city manager's now here, we'll say a few comments to get the meeting started. Again, this is the budget process cycle we're into now over the next probably four weeks. Just to let everybody know, we've basically kind of put a, I'll say a slow halt on our budget process, trying to give the state of Virginia a chance to do the work that they're supposed to do, which is pass a budget and pass along to the municipalities what the state budget looks like that we would count on for next year, so we're trying to give them a chance to do that. We really need that number, obviously, to know what our revenues are coming into the city before we start deciding on certain expenses. It's going to be, it's going to, it's going to be a tough budget year. I don't want to sit here and say the city's in a bed of roses, it's not. City's in a better place, though. We've refinanced our debt, we, we're looking at our expenses close, we're in a much better place than we were 18 to 24 months ago, there's no doubt about that. I think anybody's looked at the numbers will agree with that. But we've got a long way to go, and we've got to be really diligent, we've got to be really careful how we spend our money, so this year and probably next year, we'll be very, very tight on budgetary matters, so that we make sure the city puts itself in the best position possible to go forward and pay our debt obligations and set ourselves up for the next, you know, five to 10 years, and that's the name of the game. That's why this council's here, and that's why hopefully the new elected council after May will come with the same message, because it's that important to the city. So with that said, I'll see if city manager's got any comments.
Yeah, I'll kind of follow up on that. The mayor's correct, we are in the throes of the budget season, we are, in my opinion, the budget's probably 95% complete, we're waiting on the state to provide some revenues to us, and with that being said, one thing that the city has to look forward, has to look at doing going forward is growing revenue in the city. Cutting and cutting and cutting is not necessarily the answer, it's going to be part of the answer, but if we don't grow revenue in the city, we're not going to get to where we need to be three, five, and 10 years down the road. Tamara and myself, we just spent an hour and 15 minutes on the phone with a firm from DC to look at other options in regards to revenue growth. They are experts in the field, it's actually a law firm in DC, they've helped out other localities across the nation, and I'll be continuing to have some discussions with those folks, and they're willing to lend a helping hand for us in regards to revenue growth, so look forward to working with them, once we go through the proper channels to retain them.
Okay, all right, council comments?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your leadership, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart, I don't think we've had good leadership from that position in a long time, a long time. We've had people that want to give everybody everything with no cost to it. I've said it multiple times, we want to cut real estate taxes, not raise them, we want to give every employee a raise, and we've got involved in things that we shouldn't have been involved with as a city. So here is, I think you're going to see this, I hope we're going to see this, we're going to have an option. Option A is every citizen in the city of Bristol can pay 10 to 15 cents more per hundred on their real estate taxes, or we cut expenses. I mean, that's where we're at, so make the choice, but people need to understand the options, you know, and I'll tell you, we've put ourselves with 30 years of stupidity where we are tonight. Good mindset that government can create jobs and so forth and so on, government doesn't do anything but provide services, but unfortunately, people think government, Keynesian economics is the answer, and some of you don't know what Keynesian economics is, some of you out there don't know what Keynesian economics is. Look at it, look at demographics of this country, look at demographics of this city. The growth era for this city is over, the growth era for this country is over, we have peaked. What we've got to learn to do, Mr. Mayor, citizens of this city, not the rest of the council, but citizens of this city, what we have to learn to do is live within our means and quit fantasizing that we can spend and spend and spend money we don't have. Liberalism is a dead tool, liberalism is dead, okay? And bottom line, you shake your head, you smile all you want, but you can't spend what you ain't got, and you can't get what you can't get. And I look forward, Mr. Mayor, to all the people parading in here and so forth and all the discourse we're going to have, because quite frankly, we need to dose of reality instead of the fantasy that we've lived in for way too long. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, other members?
Yeah, I do have a comment here, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and I'm sure as the budget cycle moves forward, we're going to see the crowds getting larger and larger, but I'm going to remind everybody and ask you, you know, to just keep a level head on everything and, you know, not let emotions rise up, because you, you can't work through emotions, you know, they're just from one end of the spectrum to the other, so just, you know, look at the numbers, look at what's real, and we will come up with a budget that's good for the city and healthy and keep everything intact, but, you know, we are having some tough decisions that we're going to have to start making here shortly, and we need everybody to know that we're going to get through this, you know, it's not going to cripple the city, we're going to keep everything intact, but we are going to have to make some very hard decisions and some restructuring with the way that we've been doing things in the past, and just need to remind everybody to keep their emotions intact. All right, thank you.
Well, I want to say one other thing, Mr. Wingard, people asked me today up in Abingdon if this was, no, we're going to change the name of the city of Bristol, Virginia to Wingard City, because everywhere they've been in the city of Bristol, Virginia, they've seen a sign for Kevin Wingard or something like that, and I said, well, it depends on who gets elected and so forth and so on, and what kind of motions are before council, but, but, you know, that was, that's the actual, that's the actual statement today, and I said, whoa, but it has a good ring to it, Wingard City, what do you think?
I don't think so.
How about Wingard Town? I'll go for that tomorrow, Wingard Town.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that this council, the decisions that we have to make will in no way be personal as far as beneficial for us in any sense of the word. We're all tasked to do what's best for the whole city, not just for one or two groups, and it's a tough decision as that result, is it, if there is pain, which I'm sure there will be, we have to spread it evenly across the board.
And, and Mr. Hubbard, that's very, very true, and we've, for too long, we've had people and groups in this city that have benefited for way too long for city money, okay? And particularly, some of these people that come in here that haven't paid the pain of living in the city for 50 to 100 years, and their families and so forth, but they can come in here and dictate to us? No, ain't going to happen, and they know who they are.
All right, with that said, the regular agenda we'll get started on. Item one on the regular agenda, consider resolution for the sale of city-owned property, staff report.
Counsel, over the past probably six to nine months, we have been discussing the sale of city properties that are located within the, well, even in the county, properties located within the city and in the county. We've provided a list of those properties to council at the February 27th, 2018 meeting, and this, the purpose of this resolution is to clarify the procedure of how we will go about selling property when an offer is received through my office.
All right, seeing nobody signed up for public comment on this item, go ahead and read the resolution.
Resolution for the sale of city-owned property, whereas the city of Bristol is the lawful owner of numerous parcels of property located within the city limits of the city of Bristol and within Washington County, Virginia, and whereas the city council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, has expressed an interest in selling property owned by the city, and whereas the city manager solicited requests for proposal from real estate brokers and auctioneers, and the city council previously allowed the city manager to enter into a contract with Evans &amp; Evans Real Estate and Count's Auction to sell city-owned property, and whereas it is council's desire to liquidate property in the most efficient and profitable manner at the advice of the city agents, and now therefore be it resolved that the city council does hereby resolve to allow Evans &amp; Evans Real Estate, Count's Auction, and the city manager to negotiate sales prices and contracts for the sale of city-owned land based on recent market surveys or appraisals, and be it further resolved that the city manager will present all contracts to the city council for approval prior to the city manager executing the sales contract, and be it further resolved pursuant to Article 7, Section 9 of the Constitution and Section 15.2-1800 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, has the authority to dispose of real estate owned by the city after the holding of a public hearing.
All right, with that, is there a motion by council?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion, Mr. Wingard?
Second.
Have a second, Mr. Hubbard, any discussion?
After a public hearing.
That's correct.
In other words, if there's a piece of property worth valued at $30,000 on the books, you agree, you say, I'm going to sell this at 15,000, that's the bid, so we can have a public hearing and the public can decide and listen to the reasons why we're doing 15,000 as opposed to the fair market value of the property. Is that what the resolution says, Ms. Reeves?
There'll be a public hearing, and if people have a concern about what we're selling the property for, they can voice that concern, or they can come and voice their support for it.
Well, bottom line is, you're not the final arbiter of the sale.
No, council is.
That's all we're now.
A couple of procedural things, just to clarify, the public hearing, do you anticipate trying to, since you have to advertise those, trying to lump some together to be more efficient?
Yeah, what I would do, depending on the number of offers we get, I don't want to hold someone up for an extended period of time in order to get two or three offers. I would anticipate, especially once we get the real estate agent and the auctioneer in place, we'll probably have several offers all at once that we can do on one night. There may be stragglers that come along, and I may have to do one a month in order to facilitate that transaction, because it's not my intent to hold people up just to wait on another offer so I can advertise two, three, or four, five pieces of property at once.
But as best you can.
As best I can, yes.
And then, just to clarify, if my understanding's right, according to our charter, we have to have a three-fourths majority to transfer real estate?
I've gone back and looked at the Constitution of Virginia, the Constitution under Section 9, when you read the specific parcels of land that have to be sold with a three-fourths majority, I don't think we have any of the property that would fall under that category. A lot of that has to do, it talks about wharfs, docks, parks, things of that nature. Now, if, for instance, we wanted to sell Sugar Hollow Park, I think that would fall within that purview under the Constitution where we'd have to have a three-fourths vote, which is basically 3.75 members, so we'd have to have four.
He was going to buy out there, missed three quarters of the vote.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Wingard, second, Mr. Hubbard, please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, moving on to item two, consider the second reading of an ordinance 66-123, Retirement Health Insurance Benefit Program Conditions to Remove Item F, staff report.
Counsel, at previous meeting, we had the public hearing and a first reading of this ordinance, this ordinance would allow us to remove item F, which states, "For eligible retirees who are insured under the city or school board health insurance policy, the city shall pay this benefit directly on their premium bill. For those eligible retirees insured with another company, the city shall pay their benefit to them as a monthly check. By removing item F, which I just read, the administration can determine which payment billing will be most efficient for the city. Billing options may include direct billing of the health insurance to retirees, and this would be effective for premiums that are in effect on July 1, 2018."
All right, seeing no one signed up for public comment, do I have a motion, a second, to read the ordinance caption only?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, may I have a motion of Mr. Wingard, second, Mr. Hartley, council discussion? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance caption only.
The amended ordinance 66-123, the Retirement Health Insurance Benefit Program hyphen conditions.
Right now, I motion a second to adopt the amended ordinance 66-123, that was the motion just to read it, now we need a motion to adopt it.
I'll make the motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll second.
Make a motion, Mr. Hartley, second, Mr. Wingard, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, moving on to number three, consider public hearing regarding first reading of an ordinance to vacate all of certain right-of-way in the city of Bristol, Virginia. Hereby open the hearing. Staff report, comment?
Okay, yeah, this request is, has been made by Mr. Sam Keith, the owner of the property at 108 Second Street, all the adjoining properties have signed off on that petition to vacate that right-of-way. The petition was filed in the public hearing advertised on March 26th and April 2nd of this year, and it was circulated to other departments like police, fire, BBU, and other utilities, and to, we've received no comments regarding that, the vacation of that right-of-way, so we recommend approval of that. Do you all have any questions?
Okay, so this right-of-way has been in, in existence forever, and nobody's ever done anything with it?
No, that's correct.
Okay, and we have no future plans to ever do anything with it?
No.
So is the entire place in yellow?
Yes, that's correct.
The bottom line is, everybody around has approved it.
That's correct.
It'll be affected by this and so forth and so on, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so I didn't miss that, okay, good.
All right, other comments? All right, no public comment, sign up for this one, so I close the hearing. On to number four, consider the first reading of an ordinance to vacate all of certain right-of-way in the city of Bristol, Virginia. Need a council motion, a second, for the first reading of the ordinance.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wingard, second, Mr. Hubbard, any comment by council? Please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance to vacate a portion of an unimproved public right-of-way of two unnamed alleys. Whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia desires to vacate a portion of a right-of-way of an unnamed alley in the city of Bristol, Virginia, more particularly described as follows. Unnamed alley from the southern right-of-way of New Hampshire Avenue running south between the real property identification of the city of Bristol, Virginia, tax parcel 30-12-17A and the real property identification of the city of Bristol, Virginia, tax parcel 30-4-4, I'm sorry, parcel 30-5-4-1A to the northern boundary of the real property identification of the city of Bristol, Virginia, tax parcel 30-1-18, and an unnamed alley from the western right-of-way of Second Street running west between the real property identification of the city of Bristol, Virginia, tax parcel 30-5-4-3A and the real property identification of the city of Bristol, Virginia, tax parcel 30-1-18, ending at the unnamed alley just described. Whereas the vacating of said right-of-way has been advertised in a public hearing held, all in compliance with Section 15.2-2006 of the 1950 Code of Virginia as amended. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, that the right-of-way in the city of Bristol, Virginia described above should be and hereby is vacated, and be it further ordained that the clerk of the city shall cause a certified copy of this ordinance to be recorded among the land records in the office of the circuit court for the city of Bristol as required by law.
One amendment I would ask, Mr. City Manager, to that is, bottom line is, the landowners that have apparently said that they would give up their right-of-way, sign off on this, I think that's appropriate and necessary, otherwise we come back in here, we approve this tonight, and they come in, and somebody comes in and says, oh, that wasn't, the representation is true, so let's have the landowners sign off that gave up their right-of-way, and then let's file it, that would be my amendment to your ordinance.
In the packet, there is a document where the land, adjoining landowners have signed off, it was received on February 27th, 2018, but I can add language in here that states, whereas adjoining landowners have signed off on the vacating of the right-of-way as of February 27th, 2018.
Well, realistically, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, whatever the landowners did in February until this came before council, there's not necessarily any teeth to it, so what I'm suggesting is we add that to the language, as you say, as you told me that language, they sign off on it, and then we record it. That way, if we approve this as a city council and so forth and so on, going forward, it's free and clear, it's clear, title's clear, and so forth for the right-of-way. Otherwise, we open ourselves up to people saying, oh, well, I didn't understand this, this, and this, so I would ask for that.
I think there would need to be a motion made for that amendment.
Well, I'll make the motion for that amendment.
Second.
Do you need clarity on the motion?
I guess what we need to clarify is, do we want every landowner to sign this, I mean, how do you want it?
Ms. Reeves?
How do you want it in the ordinance?
You know, you have to craft that, that's your role, not mine. I don't sit here as an attorney. What I am saying to you is, bottom line is, every landowner that would be affected by giving up this right-of-way needs to sign a release acknowledging what they're doing. Now, you know, it's hard to put that into a motion per se, but that's not what I'm paid to do, that's what you're paid to do, so you need to put, that's my motion, you understand what I'm trying to get to, that we get a complete release from every landowner affected by this, and put into the transfer that you suggested and so forth.
But we're, as it stands right now, we are in compliance with state law under Section We've had the public hearing, we've given notice, and we are in compliance with state law.
Well, okay, so we're going to be in compliance with Chapter 15.2, and I'm going to tell you, I'd rather be safe than sorry, because I've seen too many times the council in the past have been pretty sorry, and I would rather be safe.
What you're saying is that the public notice aspect of this negates any future claims against this maneuver?
That's correct.
Because they had a chance to oppose it at the time of the public announcement?
That's correct.
Okay, well.
They've also signed a petition to.
On top of that, they've already signed a petition.
Which is in the packet.
Well, if they would do all that, then why can't they sign a release and so forth along with the transfer of the right-of-way? I mean, one more step along the way to make sure, but, I mean, if we don't want to be careful, then just be frivolous and negligent, that's fine. My motion's on the table, Mr. Hart, Mr. Hubbard seconded it, although I don't know if he still seconded it, because I don't know if, you know.
Well, I think we're covered, but I don't object to having them sign another document, just.
So you agree with my motion, Mr. Hubbard?
Yes.
Very well, then there's a motion on the floor to amend, and there's a second.
All right, please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yeah.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, on to item five, consider a motion to allow the city manager to enter into the retainer agreement with Sanford, Heisler, Sharp, LOP, and Kaufman &amp; Canoles, PC.
Counsel, within the past month and a half, I've been in discussions with Sanford, Heisler, and Sharp, and Kaufman &amp; Canoles, they are two law firms that are bringing lawsuits against pharmacy benefit managers and producers of opioids. As we all know, Virginia's been particularly hard by the opioid crisis, and specifically Bristol's been hit hard as well. We've dedicated a significant amount of public resources and money to manage the problems resulting from the opioid crisis, and off the top of my head, I can think that probably social services is probably one that's affected the most, along with the court system and our jail system. The above referenced attorneys are proposing to prosecute claims against the companies that they have identified as having contributed to and benefited from the opioid epidemic in Virginia, and should the lawsuit be successful, the city of Bristol receives 75% of the monetary recovery received.
Okay, anyone signed for public comment, so pleasure, counsel, and a motion, a second, to allow the city manager to enter into this retainer agreement.
Whoa, I want to make sure, you said 75% of the money recovered to the city of Bristol. Now, how are they going to determine, Mr. City Attorney, City Manager, how are they going to determine the amounts that the city of Bristol, Virginia gets? If this is a class action lawsuit, then we're talking about jurisdictions throughout the South, we're talking about counties, we're talking about towns, we're talking about cities. How do you distinguish how Bristol, Virginia gets a piece of this action? I mean, we've talked about this, but what's, what are the parameters that we're going to sign off with to what we're going to get?
Paragraph 9, 10, and 12 of the retainer agreement, which is, was in the packet, specifically set out how the city would be compensated. Paragraph 9 reads, "In consideration of the legal services and counsel to be rendered by attorneys, the client agrees to pay attorneys a contingent fee representing the percentage of the lawsuit settlement or judgment," in quotations, "award, which shall be calculated before reimbursement of costs and expenses pursuant to paragraph 12 of the agreement. The attorney's contingent fee percentage shall be 25% of the client's recovery. In the event, in paragraph 10, "In the event that the defendant's pay client in a structured settlement or under any other arrangement that results in the defendant's payment being made in installments rather than a single lump sum, the division of the award according to the provisions of paragraph 9 shall be applied to each payment received by the client." If you read on, paragraph 12, this, in its last sentence of paragraph, actually, it's 13, "The specific percentage of the total cost which the client shall be responsible in the event the client is one of multiple similarly situated plaintiffs in a collective action shall be that portion of the aggregate damages the client's damage claim represents in relation to the aggregate damage claim of all similarly situated plaintiffs." So what they will do is they will calculate the amount of damages from each locality, and then they prorate it, if Bristol, if there's a aggregate damage amount of a billion dollars, and Bristol's portion of that is 3%, then our award would be 3% of $1 billion.
Well, that'd be 75% of 3% of $1 billion and so forth, but that's, that, would you disagree with me that is a very vague contract and so forth and so on?
I would have to disagree. I would have to disagree.
Okay, that's, that's what you get paid for, and that's why we got a record, and I wanted your, your opinion.
All right, so do I have a counsel motion and a second to allow the city manager to enter into this retainer?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Wingard.
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Hartley. Any counsel discussion?
Yeah, I have a problem with it, in the sense that while it is on a contingency basis, it is except for the expenses generated. In the event that we would lose the suit, we would have to pay all expenses to these attorneys. And, not to slam attorneys, but I don't want to give a blank check to any organization that says they represent the law, because I don't know all the questions and all the answers, but I know it takes lots of faxes, lots of emails, lots of this, lots of that, at twenty-five, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars a whack.
Well, we're talking about depositions, we're talking about a lot of discovery, so is our maximum cost, Mr. City Manager, City Attorney, going to be three percent of whatever? I mean, would we, we, I just want to make sure. I mean, I think that's, that's the question, that's why I'm not gonna approve this, because I think it's vague, okay? I agree.
Well, I think it's unlimited.
I think it's unlimited, I agree. And that's what, you know, a contract's a contract. And, you know, if you don't lock down the loopholes, we have the falls over and over again. And I, for one, don't want to see that happen to the taxpayers in this city, period. I mean, negligent, here's the thing, man, it's easy to say, this sounds good. Yeah, we have an opiate problem. We got, not just an opiate problem, we got a drunk problem, we got an alcohol problem, we got a everything-drug problem, okay? But you know what? If we're gonna sign off here, we're basically signing our, our citizens to pay, like Mr. Hubbard said, the expenses. You know?
If we lose.
Yeah, if we lose.
That's one of the possibilities.
That's a strong possibility, Mr. Hubbard.
We're not in a position to say that we can cover any expense when we can't pay our current bills.
See, here's the problem. We're gonna sue pharmaceuticals for mistakes and problems, weaknesses that human beings have. You know, they're responsible? Well, to a certain extent, overpricing and overcharging people, yeah, they're responsible for a lot of things. But, you know, you can't just sue. People knew when they were, like the tobacco thing, the tobacco settlement, guess what? People knew, they knew that if you smoked, you dipped snuff, you chewed tobacco, you could die. It's a fact. But somehow, we did that. Now, unless we get a contract locked in that expresses our limits to our expenses, I, I can't go with that, that's, that's actually stupid. It really is stupid to do that without it locked in.
Can you address the maximum exposure to the city?
Well, I think Mr. Hubbard and Mr. Flener are right. Expenses include filing fees, court costs, fees for service of process, copying charges, transcription expenses, printing costs, computerized legal research, investigative expert disposition costs, trial costs. So these are all, as Mr. Flener knows, these are all the type of expenses that are usually the client is held responsible for in the event of a lawsuit, when you're retained to represent an individual or a business on a contingency fee. These costs would be, just like everything else, it would be prorated, so depending on what the cost is for the entire suit, if our portion's only three percent, we pay three percent of that cost.
Where is that in the contract? You were specific to point out the, the recovery would be seventy-five percent of three percent, but where is the expense part in the contract? I didn't see that.
It's in the same paragraph.
Okay. Okay. Not to, what we need to put, go back to them and say, not to exceed X. That would be the prudent play in a contract to preserve the rights of our, our citizens and taxpayers in the city. So I suggest we go back and say, yeah, we're, we're in for three, for seventy-five percent of three percent if we recover, but we're, our exposure if we don't recover is limited to X, not to exceed X. And I think realistically, it should be no more exposure than ten to fifteen thousand dollars. That's my opinion.
Well, at least have the option to drop out at that point.
If it exceeds that, or whatever, we get in.
If it's gonna go beyond that, we have the option to drop out.
I, I, I don't think that's a imprudent, I don't think that's an imprudent thing to say. I think that's very prudent.
I don't know if that makes any sense legally.
Well, I mean, I think you're gonna be on the hook at some point, you're gonna be on the hook for at least whatever that not-to-exceed limit is.
Well, yeah, no, I don't mean we can back out and not have to pay anything, I mean.
I guess the problem is when you, if you say, okay, if we get a bill and it says we're fifteen thou, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and we're nowhere near completion of the case, we're either gonna be going forward, not knowing what the cost will be, or we drop out, and we might miss out on the opportunity to recover some funds.
I understand that we might miss out, it's the problem in our financial position, we can't afford to gamble that we might win.
That's right.
We, we don't have enough money to say, let's bet it all on black.
And you're, that's exactly right, and you know, you talk about conting, when you talk about contingency fees that attorneys do, most of our clients are indigent. Now, we sign a contract that they understand that they're to reimburse us for deposition costs, what, you know, copying, I mean, some lawyers can suck the blood out of a turnip, okay? But, you know, you've been in the business, we know, I know, when I take that risk, that it's very plausible, that if somebody doesn't own a home, and they're, you know, blah, 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 they don't have health insurance, that they're not gonna be able to pay me back twenty grand to litigate a lawsuit. Now, that's me, that's my gamble, and I have to be darn sure, as poor a man as I am, I have to be darn sure that I've got a pretty good chance. This city has been duped, I'm gonna use a word, I think that's a good word, duped, that's my new discovered word tonight, duped into a lot of stupid stuff. We don't need to be duped into a fantasy that we're gonna get paid back for everybody's individual addiction issues by some big pharma out here. Because I'll tell you, I think they're bloodsuckers, trying to find, you know, there's people out here that do class actions, if you, you know, for any kind of surgical mesh or whatever, they advertise on TV. But now they come to a jurisdiction that knows they can fund it. Every little jurisdiction says, we're gonna get our piece of this. And it ain't a guarantee here, folks, I'm gonna tell you, this is not a guarantee, and it's expensive litigation.
So I got another question. Did, did the state of Virginia get behind the tobacco settlement as, as a state? Or was it each locality in the state got behind it? How did that unfold?
That was a federal class action, which is different than a state multi, multi-partal, multi-claimant litigation, so it was completely different.
So the state had no real liability or risk?
No skin.
Or anything in that, they had no skin in the game in that one?
Right.
Has the state been approached, or could they be approached to see if they are willing to put the skin in the game, since this could be a, a large windfall for the state localities, but to back up the litigation expenses?
I would have to verify, but I do believe the A G's office has been involved to a degree, but I'm not exactly sure what they are going to do in regards to litigation expenses. It's been several months ago, I saw something, I believe it was in Virginia Lawyers Weekly, about the A G's office being involved in the opioid cases.
So, me ask, me follow up on the mayor's question. So, Mr. Mayor, you and I are reaching out to our state legislators, because now, tonight, maybe to ask them for some assistance, because, you know, we've, it's been said, we don't ask our state legislators, but we're not supposed to, that's supposed to come from the city, but, you know, I like his idea. So maybe perhaps, Mr. City Manager, you could reach out to all of our wonderful legislators we have around here, and see if they can pony up some money to help us finance what's basically funded the city jails and the state prisons and so forth and so on, and a lot of lawyers for a long time. But I bet you they, let's get their answer, in writing, on paper, can the, can the state and our representative, through our representatives, can the state help us? And, you know, I, I think that's what, I, I, I think that should be part of the motion, Mr. Mumpower, Mr. Mayor, to ask our delegates who, you know, we haven't reached out before. Here I am, we're reaching out, tonight, to get help, because we sure can't do it. We can't do it. And if we think we can, we're big boys, and we're big, playing in a big pond, and we're small fish, real small fish.
Okay, well, based on the discussion, I'll ask the person that made the motion, do they wanna stick with the motion, or you wanna modify the motion?
Who made a motion?
Well, I did, to open it up for discussion, you have to make a motion and get a second before we even talk.
Since it's been so long, I, I forgot. I mean, you know, it's a senior, senior moment, okay?
But I do have some, some concerns about this. You know, we're not in a position to add line items to the budget. We don't have the money. So if the state is willing and capable, I'm all in for that.
Good.
But, you know, even if we do not enter into this class action lawsuit, which is obviously gonna cost us money to enter in, we may not get anything, once it's settled, if it's ever settled, it can go on for decades before it's ever settled. But if and when it is ever settled, you know, the whole country comes out a winner anyway, because the, they now see that the devastation that it's done and the crisis that it's created. But, uh.
Well, I think the state should be the lead agent in this battle.
I, I think, I think higher power should be the leader.
Because they're gonna be paying big money through Medicaid and all these other, that's gonna cost the state due to this crisis that we're in, I don't think anybody is arguing that there isn't a crisis.
And, you know, really, when you look at the whole big picture, who's more at fault? The manufacturer of a product that had a, had a reason for that product?
That's right.
And it's been abused, or the doctors that's been writing the prescription, issuing it left and right, and everywhere in between?
Well.
So to me, it falls more on doctors than it does the pharmaceutical companies.
Well, you told, Mr. E, you, you basically said the whole bang. Tobacco companies were sued by the federal government. Wow. Now, let me think about that.
No.
What, what federal government led it?
It was within the federal court system, I don't think the federal government led that.
Well, okay, that's, that's not what you said, but that's, we'll go back and look at that, but the bottom line is, there was big money funding against the tobacco companies, okay? Would you disagree with that? And what you're doing is you're pooling resources from all over, all kinds of jurisdictions and so forth and so on. And, you know, Big Pharma, when they're going against the feds or whatever, which is, you know, unlimited, you print it to Fed, anytime you want to, you know, we really, really need to just ask our, here's, let's just change the amendment here, or motion. Let's ask our legislators, Senator Carrico, Mr. O'Quinn, Mr. Kilgore down in Gate City, okay? Let's ask our legislators, or make a motion to ask our legislators, to ask our state to fund us. For first time ever, well, we won't really ask as a council, the people that we elect to serve us, to really do what, you know, Bristol shouldn't have to do it, Washington County shouldn't, Abingdon shouldn't, it should be the state. So my motion is on the table. We ask our Republican legislators in southwest Virginia, from wherever it starts, from Roanoke down, because there's not, I don't think, a Democrat in southwest Virginia that's an elected official, as a legislator.
Mr. Flener, I think to get to your point, since we had the original motion, we'd have to withdraw the motion, but I would, I would agree that, based on this, to, to probably table it, I don't, is there, I don't know that there's a sense of urgency to this, I don't think, I mean, so.
I believe we need to vote on it the way it is, and I don't think it's gonna pass, and I'm not hearing that this is gonna pass, and if we vote this down, then it can come back to us at a later date revised with state assistance or state not assisting, and we can either pass it or vote it down again at that time.
Procedurally, Mr. City Manager, city slash city attorney, do, can we not make the amendment here tonight to ask, to ask our state legislators, to ask the state, which has gratuitously given us roads we don't necessarily need in this city, but can we not ask them, since we've never asked them before, to help us fund this legislation against the Big Pharma companies that provided Loratab, whatever, OxyContin, whatever it was? I mean, is, I'm asking you, that's my question, is that inappropriate procedurally? If it isn't, why not? If it can be, can I make that motion?
Well, I'm not sure who made the first motion.
Mr. Wingard.
Mr. Wingard. And Mr. Wingard would have to amend his motion in order to make that amendment.
So here's the way I see it, so all, all the, all the motion was to allow the city manager to go into a retainer agreement. So that motion gets amended to where modifications are made, and then the final agreement comes back to council for final approval, that would be accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish, I think.
And in the interim, perhaps the city attorney slash city manager, whichever way you like it, can contact our legislators and see how much interest they have, and actually go into the state to help us with this issue. You can do that without.
I can do that without a motion.
That's what I thought, because you met with, you know, Carrico and whatever his name is, O'Quinn, in your office a couple weeks ago, and so, you know, you didn't need a motion to meet with them, did you?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
Or you could come back to city council with a final agreement. You know, we could, we could pass it as is, to allow him to go into an agreement, but have to bring the agreement back to city council for final approval, because he's heard the discussion of, he knows the concerns, so.
I mean, I, I would just say, just table it and bring it back unless there's a urgent need, and then that way you can get the answers to the questions you're talking about from the legislature, you can have the final agreement, and it would, it would just be simpler just to do that, because I think there's a, there's a lot of questions, and I know, I think Mr. Hubbard and Mr. Flener mentioned about trying to put a cap on expenses, you might could look at that issue as well. I mean, he's heard our concerns, give, give him some time to work that out.
I think you're right.
And then come back in next meeting or next month, and see what we have.
And being honest with you, this is so unclean right now, at this point in time, I don't even know what's on the, I don't.
I mean, that, that, I think that's the best way to move forward.
Everybody has reservations about this, so.
They can bring it up later, just vote it down now, and let's go.
I think we need to vote it down and let it come back before us in a different.
Exactly, it's not dead just because we kill it now.
It can come back at any time with the revise.
Was there a second, did you second that?
There was a motion by Mr. Wingard, saying, Mr. Hartley, we've had the discussion, so please call the roll.
Flener.
No.
Hartley.
No.
Hubbard.
No.
Wingard.
No.
Mumpower.
No.
All right, on to number six. Consider amendment to the Sessions Hotel Agreement. Staff report.
Counsel, this is in regards to the Sessions Hotel in, well, I don't wanna say May of last year, I've done some further research since this A I S was prepared. Prior, this agreement was signed in May, on May fifth of two thousand and seventeen. It was approved and amended, restated performance agreement between the city, C B H Bristol, L L C, and I D A. During the community trust bank's due diligence period, they determined that the actual amounts listed on the D I trust need to be updated to reflect the revised loan modification numbers that resulted from the S B A funding process. The first mortgage amount of eight million needs to be changed to eight point seven million, and the second mortgage amount of three point five million needs to be changed to four point oh two million. Both of these numbers are highlighted on page four in the attached agreement. These changes are considered clerical and do not affect any other part of this agreement, and in no way change the city's position or the default provisions afforded by the performance agreement. Due diligence periods usually uncover flaws or progression variances, and amendments such as this allow both parties to create a stronger, more accurate document.
All right, no public comment. With pleasure, counsel.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Mr. Wingard's got a motion on the table, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hubbard, counsel discussion.
I, I just really, of course, it's not my money, the city of Bristol, I mean, can we clarify, we have nothing on the line here other than we get the money back from the rental rooms.
Split, split revenues, yeah.
There's split revenues. This agreement's been amended, the initial agreement was nineteenth day of December, two thousand and thirteen. At that time, the agreement did not include the paragraph two point two, which is the tourism development financing program grant. And then I believe the, it was also amended, so the, the initial agreement called for a one point two million dollars over a five-year period, that would be the no-net loss. So that was the first agreement. The second agreement. The second agreement, which was signed on May the 5th of 2017, calls for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar no-net loss. And then there was a Tourism Development Financing Program Grant to the tune of one point seven million dollars as a promotion for economic development within the city, and those funds were taken from 1% of the total sales tax that is generated by the Sessions Hotel. So at this point, the city's not necessarily out anything, but we're losing potential tax revenue due to the no-net loss agreement.
Well, where is this grant coming from?
Well, that's just what, that was how it was presented. Uh, if you go back and look, I pulled the minutes from 2013.
I'd rather not go back to 2013. It gives me chills just thinking about it.
The revenue is coming from the sales tax on food, the meals tax, we call it, and the room tax. Those two taxes, we're gonna be basically splitting the revenue, and they get it up to a certain point, in this case, eight fifty.
Well, if in a four-block radius of the city of Bristol, Virginia, four or five-block radius, we're gonna have a hotel in Bristol, Tennessee. We're gonna have one right at the corner of State Street and Commonwealth, Voluntary Parkway, whatever you want to call it. And then three blocks up, we've got one right over here. So we're expecting a tourism boom. I mean, I'm expecting that. Uh, is that accurate? Do we have anything to base this? You know, all these wonderful things happen in 12, 13, 14 councils. I mean, is there any, you know, basis for all these hotels?
Well, I went back to the AIS from October 27th of 2015, and at some point in 2013, I didn't necessarily have all the time to go through each, um, AIS, but council approved what was called a tourism zone. And that tourism zone is authorized under 58.1 hyphen 38 58.1 in the Code of Virginia, which allows for the locality to commit 1% of the sales tax back to tourism as a grant to certain businesses that are coming in that would be tourism-type, uh, programs. So that's how it all began for that tourism grant, for them to get 1.7 million.
Okay, I'll move on really quick. There's a motion here, but the bottom line is, the council in 2013, everybody can go on the websites and look and see who they were, and they decided they set up a tourism zone. Wow. Boy, I'm impressed with that. Three hotels within a half-mile to six-tenths of a mile radius in a town of 17,000. And if you want to see how tourism is, take a gander at the race that's coming up this weekend. Okay? That tells you where your tourism's coming from and where it's going, okay? That'll tell you everything you need to see. But, uh, hey, remain optimistic.
Well, if, if they don't perform, we don't pay. It's not like...
You know, I feel sorry for these saps that are coming down here.
Well, you're gonna get that whole area that's crumbling right now, it's gonna be turned into seventeen, twenty million dollar valuable property. If it fails, then the bank will pay the property.
Somebody in this city is gonna have a homeless shelter that's gonna be pretty nice, maybe a couple. That's what's gonna happen. And you know what? Do what you will and hope what you want. You know, Bobby Kennedy prayed on the rosaries when he was being shot, and he didn't save his life. And I ain't gonna sit here and pray on some ideas here that are from that council. I wouldn't vote for anything that that bunch did, not one thing.
All right, any other counsel discussion? All right, we got a motion of Mr. Wingard, a second, Mr. Hubbard, please call the roll.
Flainer?
No way.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Awesome. Very good. Very good.
All right, on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve as written?
Oh, no. No, 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 no. I want 7.3, I think it is, taken out.
7.3.
Voted separately.
Well, I want to discuss it too. 7.3, because that was one of the, I, I, I've seen the itemized list and so forth and so on. I don't agree with it, and I want that taken out, 7.3.
Okay, so we want to vote on the consent agenda as written, with the exception of 7.3 to be removed? Okay.
Are you good with all the minutes?
Vote the arm as separate.
You good with all the minutes?
Dude, I don't know where I, when I was, was I on somewhere? Tell me. I don't think. I have to let Mr. Wingard tell me. I mean, he tells me if I wasn't here.
I'm thinking he missed one of these notes.
You missed March 15th. That's what I was...
That's when somebody removed the stuff from the business and so forth, and the other one was when my dad got robbed.
Which I think was in February.
Yeah, okay, okay.
That's what I was thinking, but I wasn't, couldn't remember which one.
All right, so we need to remove March 15th, called meeting minutes, and item 7.3. Is that correct?
Hold on, those two separately.
Yes, I think that's motion, yes.
And we got a second?
Yeah.
Second, Mr. Hubbard. All right. Please call the roll.
Flainer?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right. We'll do the easy one first. We'll do the minutes of March 15th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
With the exception of...
No, no, this is...
We're good, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I was reading, Bill. I can't do two things at once, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you will abstain from this.
I abstained, so, okay.
Okay, so, motion from March 15th.
Got a motion to approve the minutes from Mr. Wingard?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hubbard. Okay, please call the roll.
Flainer?
Abstain? Good.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, item 7.3. Consider budget transfer 25,000 from Fund 01 General Fund to Fund 01 General Fund per item listed below.
You know, I reviewed this. Is there any, Mr. City Manager, this is the gentleman that came in here, and we didn't know him. You didn't know him either. We didn't know this person. My, my question about paying 25,000 dollars is, you know, I remember the discussion we had upstairs, I think it was upstairs, and we talked about, I don't need the money, I've got, I don't need my mileage paid for, I don't need my hotel room paid for, and so forth and so on. I thought, man, that's my kind of guy. He comes up here and he gets paid and so forth. He didn't bill us for travel time. I don't know, as limited a period of time as he was here, how he can justify 25 grand. I'm asking you, can you tell me what he did?
If you're looking for a specific deliverable, I do not have any specific deliverable.
So, I get it. So the bottom line is, and, and he kept his own time.
The reason he would have kept his own time is because he was only in Bristol handful of times that we were involved with. A lot of the stuff that he did was from his office, either in North Carolina or, I think, Newport News, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, Newport News, I don't think he was up there. I mean, I don't think they...
That's where he lived.
Right, really.
Okay, that's where he was.
The only deliverables I know of was, he went to the Region One, um, meeting at Go Virginia. He met with City Tennessee, he met with Washington County Administration, right? He reviewed, he met with our IDA and reviewed the, um, project form that BBU is now requiring to go through editing that form to get it set up for economic development, which didn't get completed, but he did take it to the next step to try to push that through. Those are the things that I know about.
What, Mr. Mayor?
So he could detail that out. I do agree that when I read the, you know, the kind of invoices, he didn't detail it in enough detail to say... Travel to Go Virginia, uh, I was over there for, you know, you know, travel time and meeting, eight hours, whatever. You know, met with Washington County for six hours. You know, he could have laid it out in that kind of detail to see what was reasonable. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request to go back and ask for that.
I don't have a problem going back and asking for that, but what you have to remember is, we've already paid McGill and Associates. This is, uh, this is a budget transfer within, in the department, so we've already paid McGill and Associates per the contract.
Wait, wait, we've paid the 25,000, but you came and asked us for it.
It's a budget transfer within the, within the budget, within a department.
Well, don't you think, given the fact he's a contract laborer, that would have been more appropriate for us to have discussed this prior to paying them? And I got to tell you, here's an easy way to find out if he was working from North Carolina. We get the phone records. He ought to have, you know, he talked on the phone to Joe Incorporated. But you know what? Just somebody, I mean, if I could make a living just sending a bill, I'd do it tomorrow. And the easiest way to do that is if I don't have, I'm not live, working here. I work as an independent contractor, so I, you know, my motion is not to approve this 25,000 dollars, period. And then, we got a real serious issue with, now that we found out we were asking to approve it, I thought we were asking to prove it. How do we get it back?
Well, you don't get it back. I mean, we had an agreement, this council...
We had a contract that we approved.
We had a contract we approved, not knowing a lot of the issues that happened, came along with that thing too. Now, you agree with me, Mr. Hubbard, on that. We, we did not know some things.
Well, we knew we were gonna pay so many dollars per hour. I recall it was forty dollars an hour, some sort of...
No, a hundred and fifty, it was a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, not to exceed, I want to say, 15 hours a week, 12 or 15 hours.
It's impossible for him to have done this in this length of time. I don't see how it can be done. I mean, in other words, if we, we approved, you're right, Mr. Hubbard, we approved in closed session. I agree with you, we were up there. We got, we got, I mean, he, he pulled out his cellphone, and he said, I can call right now. I remember that, I've got a pretty good memory when it comes to certain details. I mean, I can call the Senator and Graham, Lindsey Graham, in South Carolina, Columbia, South Carolina. I can get him on the phone right now.
You can't do that.
Well, that's an interview, if you can, if it's not a proper process, Mr. Hubbard, and that's the problem. I'm gonna tell you, we fine, you know, I pay a misdemeanor fine, because, I mean, I don't mind paying for a misdemeanor. When, we've been screwed over so many times because we're so lazy, so stupid in this city, paying 25,000 dollars for nothing. Nothing.
Well, here's the thing. This council voted to hire this gentleman. So this is our fault, this is our mistake, and we gotta own it. He sent us a bill after we relieved him of his duties. We should have requested an itemized bill. I'm not gonna disagree with that. He should have showed us where the money went. But the bottom line is, we came up with the contract for him, we hired him, he was not producing, we fired him, and he sent us a bill.
No, whoa, whoa, whoa. Now, whoa, whoa, let's make sure, Mr. Wingard, Mr. Vice Mayor, the reason I was getting, you know, he called me up. Now, he might put that on the bill. That phone conversation lasted about a minute, and I don't think he heard one thing I said between me cussing him. Okay, I'll just tell you, it was ugly. Because the things that he, nobody on this council was advised of what had happened and transpired in Newport News. Not one of us. Now, you know what? I can put on a pretty face. I can dress up pretty nice, and I can come in and I can fool the devil out of anybody. But you know what? When you do that, if the taxpayers aren't hurt by it, it's just an individual, that's on the individual. This council had no way of knowing till after the fact. Now, are we supposed to Google? Are we supposed to do that? Is checking people's history our responsibility? If it is, then we need to change our job description. Because you're asking for more than I signed up for. And I got the information from a outside, third-party source. And you know what? People are not gonna be doing economic development with people that have collateral issues hanging over their head in other jurisdictions. They just, they won't do it. They have no credibility. So I'm asking, and, and I'll take my lumps, Mr. Wingard, but we didn't have our full... This council did not have full information to make a decision.
I agree with that.
Man, I want the money back. We got a ballfield guy here right now for the, for the, what is it, Tigers, White Sox, I don't go and watch, I'm too old to... Pirates, I was close, I was the third one, okay? But we got a guy here that needs money for to fix the outfield. Right? That sure as heck go a long way to the enjoyment of the people in this city, the young people who like to go and watch the games, instead of giving it to some dude that did nothing, except send a bill. And I'm not gonna apologize, no more than I'm gonna apologize to people for not asking on time. Do what they need to do for the city if they're elected to represent a portion of the city. I'm not gonna apologize for that. Too many people apologize. We're not politically correct in that. But I want to figure out how we get this money back.
So is the motion to, uh, request city manager to send a letter, request...
We want our money back, and more itemized details, what my motion is.
The motion is to authorize the transfer of funds within the budget. The money's already been paid. We can make another motion if we want to, to ask McGill to please provide us more detail.
So we gotta keep the accounting clean, so we gotta go ahead and approve the transfer. Have another motion to write the letter. Because the money's already moved, right? Is that what we're saying?
This is, no wonder, then, no wonder we get what we asked for, what we, what we... If this is the way we do business, we pay it, then we come back in and we ask for authorization after we've already paid it. That's dumb.
This is not authorization to spend the money.
That's what he's asking for. He's already paid it.
He's asking authorization to transfer funds within our budget.
To pay for what's already been paid.
Not to pay anything, it's to transfer money.
No, no, he's already paid it. He just said we paid it.
Yes, but that wasn't what they're asking for.
Well, they want us to transfer money to pay for something, we asked us to do something that we wouldn't have done in the first place.
Mr. Mayor asked for the vote.
What is a motion?
The motion is to transfer the 25,000 dollars within the budget to cover this payment.
Oh, boy.
Do I have a second to that?
I thought we had a second.
We got a motion in a second.
Yeah, we've got a motion in a second.
Will you the second? I don't remember, who was the second?
Who made the motion?
I missed the second. I normally write it down, I missed it.
Okay, I'll be the second.
I thought I made the motion.
Okay, Wingard made the motion, Mr. Hubbard had the second.
Yeah.
This is to approve the transfer of funds, 7 dot 3.
All right.
Please call the roll.
Flainer?
No way.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, now, do we have another motion?
I moved to accept the rest of the items on the consent agenda.
No, whoa, 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 back there, back up there. Seventy-five? Back up, back up. There's a motion in relation to 7.3.
Oh, okay.
It's okay, it's okay. Senior moment like I've had them, okay, we get them. The motion is to ask for a specific accounting, make sure this is understood, a specific accounting of the 25,000 dollar bill that was submitted to the city of Bristol, Virginia, and apparently paid and authorized ex post facto here tonight. Uh, my motion is that we, one, ask for an accounting specifics and so forth, and, once we get that, we can, we can put this on the agenda to determine what we need to do as far as pursuing this at this, at a later point. That's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
No.
I'm not sure I understand it.
If I, I'll agree to have, ask for specifics on the bill, and once we get those, you can make...
That's fine. That's what I was basically saying, I just threw that in collateral, yeah.
He wants a motion to ask for...
Yeah, but I mean, they want the other stuff.
Specific account of each, uh, each item.
Just keep it simple.
Who's gonna give us this information?
McGill.
McGill. He's already been paid. He does not have to comply to this.
That's right.
But we're gonna send him a letter, and he's gonna not pay us.
It's McGill. It's not him, it's his association.
Well, let's just put it this way, if you send a time sheet to a, a, a community, a, a city or town or whatever, you better make sure that it's right. I'll just leave it at that.
The bottom line is, we should have requested an itemized bill before the check.
Amen.
In the reputable business, we'll send you that information, even though you've already paid them.
All right, so we have a motion, or I'm confused?
I'm confused.
Motion is to ask for specific items that generated the 25,000 dollar billing.
So we got a motion, Mr. Flainer, to ask for a specific accounting detail on the 25,000 dollar invoice.
Yeah.
And a second, Mr. Hubbard.
Anything.
Please call the roll.
We'll send him a letter. Yep, good luck.
Flainer, she said?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. Item C, managed to be presented by members of the vote, I'm Ken Dyson, one person signed up.
Uh, we gotta do the rest of it.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
We've already done all that.
We did.
No, we didn't do the rest of the consent agenda.
We did.
Somebody called recessed.
Didn't we?
We've been here an hour.
I got interrupted while I was trying to ask for the... I got interrupted while I was trying to ask for the rest of it.
We just, we, we only voted to pull those out, we didn't approve.
We voted to pull them out, and we voted on...
And then we voted on the minutes, and then we haven't done the, you're right, you're correct, you're right.
Well, I didn't state it like that, I stated it as we were approving the consent agenda as written with the exception of those two items.
That's the way I heard it.
That's the way I heard it, that's what I said.
Okay, that's the way you want to do it.
Okay.
That's the way you want to play that.
I thought you were right.
That's a new way of doing it, but I guess that's legit.
Yeah.
I'm going to miss you, are you? I really am.
I am too. I've been missing me for years.
Next, Paul, agenda items.
If you're sure you're ready for me and are done with the consent agenda, I would like to thank the city manager's office for posting online the majority of the agenda support documentation. I would encourage this to be extended to such documents as the referenced agreements and the petitions, but I appreciate the progress made so far. Secondly, people are well aware that the city is in a difficult financial situation, but I would like to point out that many of the new issues are not new at all, but are newly discovered, and that the current city manager and current council are working to resolve the issues now, rather than continuing to kick the can, as the saying is, rather than, for example, rather than waiting four years to borrow for a landfill liner, you're planning for it now, just to give one example, and that's moving Bristol forward, making